I have seven o'clock and I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask that the clerk please call roll.
Mr. Jim Benage.
President Beaskey.
Mr. Jeff Elsough.
Here.
Mr. Jeff Hawes.
Here.
Ms. Betty Martine.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
We do have a quorum, so we'll get started with our regularly scheduled meeting of our October 1st meeting for your Bel Air City Council. I'm gonna ask Father Shem to come forward and offer the prayer like we do, but before we, he does that, I am gonna ask that everyone join us in a moment of silence. Since our last meeting, we last, we lost a good friend to Bel Air, former mayor Dale Walters passed away. He was our third mayor and I was able to attend his service on Saturday during the storm and have his card here if anybody would like to see that or send information for the memorial. But if you'd join us in a moment of silence remembering former mayor Dale Walters, please. Amen. Thank you. Father?
Thank you for your invitation to lead you in prayer this evening. We begin with a letter, a reading from the first letter of Saint Peter. "By obedience to the truth, you have purified yourself yourselves for genuine love of your brothers; therefore, love one another constantly from the heart. Your rebirth has come not from a destructible, but from an indestructible seed through the living and enduring word of God." Let us pray. Father of mercy, hear our evening prayer of praise and let our hearts never waver from the love of your law. Lead us on through night's darkness to the dawning of eternal life. We ask this through our Lord Jesus Christ, your son, who lives and rings with you in the unity of the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Now, please stand and join us in the same pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move into our consent agenda. Councilmember Martine made a comment, she says, "Ooh, short agenda," but we know that sometimes short agendas can have some of the most discussion. Tonight, we do have a public hearing. We're gonna hear a report from our city engineer. We're gonna consider a master walk and bike plan. And we're looking at an ordinance on special assessments and discuss water main upgrades and also discuss, I will let council know that October 8th is not going to work for our workshop, so when that time comes, we'll, I'll ask that we look at other dates so that we can have an October workshop. First thing to come before council this evening are the amendments of the September 17th, 2019 city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those, same sign. Okay, and next is probably one of the biggest appropriations ordinance I think I've ever seen, but that is 750,000 of that is to the city of Wichita. I do want to point out, this is for the project 37th Street from Woodland to Oliver. Wampo funded 80 percent, Wichita and Bel Air each paid the remaining 10 percent on that seven, which is why, like I said, there's a $750,000 payment in there. Wichita covered the initial costs and now the project's complete, so we're reimbursing them for our share. The GL bond we are currently working on will allow for long-term financing and pay back the reserve amount being spent, so this is a great example, I just wanna say, of partnering with our neighbor Wichita to replace 37th Street, which is actually a Bel Air road, so. I know $750,000, but it's actually quite a bargain. I can't believe I'm saying all of that, so. But are there any questions or comments about appropriations ordinance 19-19? Not I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve appropriations ordinance 19-19.
Second.
First and second. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those, same sign. City requested appearances. I do not have any cards in front of me, but we, we'll move into a public hearing for this. The purpose of the public hearing is to give those property owners being special assessed for public infrastructure, the opportunity to share any concerns regarding the amount being spread. Petitions were accepted from the developer to install the infrastructure, which allows the city to spread these assessments. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to, who would like to speak on their special assessments amount? Okay, I would ask that you come to the podium. We'll form a line over there against the north wall there and we'll let you come up first and we ask during the public hearing if you state your name and address. And I will tell you, I see that our, where did Ted run off to? Is he?
He's over there.
Okay, Ted's here and Kevin Callan is here, so since it is a public hearing, if there's questions, I'll warn you right now, I'm probably gonna deflect your way, so, for that, but sir, we'll let you go ahead and start.
I own a piece of property and I'm not going to try to tell you the legal description. It is the piece of property that is the southwest corner of 53rd and Webb Road. It is a farmland. It has been farmed for the 40 years that I've owned it and I'm leasing it to the gentleman that's farming it. There are no improvements of any kind on it. It's simply farmland and I have no reason to believe there's any improvement that the city or activities that the city could provide me for that land, so I'm totally against the assessment.
It's also, it's not in the city of Bel Air yet.
I'm sorry?
Telling it's not in the city of Bel Air.
Oh, yeah. It is not, in fact, in the city of Bel Air at this time.
And I'm sorry, and can you state your name and address?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm James Woolley, half of the ownership of that property, the other half's at home doing dinner or whatever. And I live at 819 West Andover, oh, I'm sorry, West Verona Court in Andover. Will that entitle me to go away now?
You're welcome to, yeah, but I appreciate we've recorded your comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next, come up, sir. I'm welcome.
Hi, my name's Don Herb. I live at 5339 North Rock Spring Court. Yeah, I'm part of that special assessment. I guess my question is, I talked to Ted on the phone and he said this was phase four, so evidently there was a phase one, two, and three in Rock Spring area where they assessed extra tax money after all was said and done and after all the streets and water improvements and everything was put in. I guess that's what this extra 11,000 or 10,000, excuse me, $10,985 on top of the special assessments that we paid when we bought the house.
And we do have specials that are, you know, the developer puts those in place when they're developing that. I'm gonna ask either city manager or CFO or Mr. Callan if one of you three would like to answer his question specifically.
Which, where are you talking about?
About phase one, phase two, phase three, yeah.
Uh-huh, phase four?
Yeah.
Okay, and you're wanting to know?
What the, I guess it's for the upgrade of streets and water, which has already been put in.
So the court would be what you're paying for?
It's the cul-de-sac, right off Rock Spring Street. I think there- Like I say, we paid specials when I bought the house. It's included in my mortgage.
Yes, yes, so.
And that's...
Mr. Manager, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, so I think, while Ted's thinking about the numbers, I, as this gentleman is stating, there are several phases over there. Sometimes what will happen is that they'll go in and do all the stormwater and the drainage first and then special assess that and then, so there is a special assessment on there for the whole drainage of the development. And then, as the phases come along, that has the streets, that has the sewer and the water mains and such, then those are added to it. So I'm not sure if that's what it is. Ted can look up for sure, but I know that has happened in the past, that a lot of times they'll do a large area at once and then when the specific cul-de-sacs or blocks come on, they'll do that, so.
That's exactly, did you see the amount you're paying right now? I believe all those properties, it's pretty minimal maybe. I can look it up really quick. If you're asking the question, compared to your neighbors, is that what you're, basically what you're asking is, are you paying more than your neighbors?
No, no, everybody's, everybody's getting taxed the same for 18 lots here on Rock Spring Court.
So that first special assessment was how much for drainage? And then this additional 10,000 is for the streets and the sewer?
Exactly.
Okay.
Streets and water.
Streets and water, okay.
Yeah, right now, it's at about $51 a month for all the drainage, the sewer and the whole development, kinda like Ty was saying. And then, now that we did your specific house, water, and paving, then that would be another special assessment on top of that.
So, okay, I figured it out and I think over 30-year note, I'll be paying 17,930 for the main one I got and 30-year principal is 10,694 on top of this 10,985, so actually the 10,694 was just for the drainage, sewer.
Yeah, so when we go through the phases, we don't, and the developer actually is the one that comes in and says, you know, for the special assessments and we approve them when we do the paving or we do the sewer, yeah, so it's not all at once.
Okay.
So that's how it's broken down.
So that's just, that was just mainly the sewer and water? So this is basically for the street in front and the water lines?
Water lines.
Okay. So we didn't pay for that initially.
Correct.
Okay, I guess that answers my question.
Okay.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Amy Mainz and I live at 5299 North Rock Spring Court. My family and I just relocated from Texas. We actually just moved into our home in June and I have our closing documents with me. Our special assessments that show that we paid for sewer, sidewalk, stormwater, drain, and paving of the 53rd Street show that our assessments for that total $9,966.45 that we still owe, that the people previously living in our home did not pay. And then, we also received the letter that Don received for more special assessments to be added into our home, onto our home. So that brings ours total special assessments to, let me find my number, sorry, $20,952.87. So in my closing documents, it does state that we paid for part of that. I'm just surprised that it is so high and if part of it has been paid, why are we getting assessed again with even more? I think $20,000 is, almost $21,000 is a lot of money, so. We don't pay special taxes in Texas, so I guess the question is, is why? And how can we fix it?
As I say, it's interesting that you bring that up and city manager and I have had a number of conversations with, you know, developers from other states and we mentioned special assessments and they all say, huh? What?
Yeah.
So your question is valid, it is fairly unique. This is something, you know, when developers come in, and I'm gonna ask the city manager to correct me if I'm wrong, city attorney here, and when we approve, you know, the special assessments here, it's, you know, it's not the city here saying this is whatever, it's the developer, they come in and build it out, then, you know, there's the lot fee and then the, then the special assessments and I know when I bought my house, it was 15, 16 years old and that was part of my negotiations, there was four years left on the specials and that was, you know, they just, these developments have that, they cover and like the gentleman before was saying, the different phases, that's why it's coming into different chunks here and, but this is the fourth one and I think at the end of this, there will be no more special assessments on that, but yeah, this is the developer when they put it in there so that it's broken down and covered and that's part of, part of, I guess, the developer's cost when they sold and built the house.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could explain a little bit? So the difference that you'll see, and like the mayor said, really South Pictorial County is the only area that typically does special assessments, go up to Johnson County, they don't, but what you'll notice is, when you're buying a house, or if you're building a house, you purchased a lot and the lot may be 20 or 30,000. And then, if you go to a place where they don't have specials, the lot's probably 60,000. And so what happens is, the developer pays for all those specials upfront and then just adds it to the cost of the lot. So that's what you'll see a difference in the price of that. Now, your other question about the closing documents, Kevin Callan's here, a bond counsel, but my assumption without seeing those is that it states that there were petitions for water, sewer, streets, and stormwater and I'm not sure that it specifically states or it maybe should that, that some of those are assessed like the gentleman before and then the other ones are coming due. Is that correct, Kevin?
Yeah, to create the benefit district, the petition for succeeding resolution has to be recorded with the register of deeds to get notice to anybody that's dealing in the property transaction. If the assessments are already in place, that they get recorded, those should, and it sounds like they were, they saw the $9,900, that when these special assessments get approved, they get recorded, certified, so that from this point forward, anybody that's dealing in this transaction will know exactly, these are the specials. We're not there yet, so in your particular case, you would have known about these specific special assessments that have been reported and certified by the city and then there should have been something that showed that the property is also subject to additional special assessments under these resolutions. I know the resolutions were recorded. That's one of the things that has to happen for the temporary head transcript to be approved and that's what is there to give you, to give you notice. If it wasn't there, I don't have an explanation, maybe it's the title company, maybe it's the seller, I'm not sure, but that's, that's the city's role. They have to record it to get notice if anybody's dealing in that property. From that point forward, it's subject to a special assessment under resolution number, whatever, of the city and in this case, of the resolution number 16-11 and 16-12 should show up somewhere in the title.
Well, I'm gonna go investigate for sure, because it does impact our mortgage at almost $1,000 a month, just for special assessments and I think that's a little extreme, it's a lot, so, I mean, anything we can do just to alleviate that, it's quite an impact on our family, so.
$1,000 of money?
Well, I mean-
A year?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, you're right.
I'm sorry, God, what are you?
Yeah, no, it is-
I need to work with that.
Point of it, but I will get to make sure, so, thank you.
Wonderful, we appreciate you attending and asking your questions. Is there anyone else wishing to speak now on the special assessments while the public hearing is still open? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I am curious, the gentleman that talked about the special assessments on the farmland, I don't know that we got clear information as to how the special assessments might impact the farmland. Can we get some clarification on that before we close the public hearing?
Mr. Callan, I'm gonna ask if he could come forward and for those here, Kevin Callan, this is our bond councils.
I don't have an answer. If that property is unplanted and not within the city limits, then it shouldn't be part of the benefit district. And I'm guessing maybe it was included in the original petition resolution somehow, but I think Ted and I maybe will do a little bit of work before we get to the ordinance and figure out whether it should be there or whether we're missing something, because again, if it's, I know that probably, and you probably know the projects we're talking about, it sort of contemplates the development that's happening, happening in that direction and there are some tracks and there are actually some tracks that have since been planted, since those petitions were submitted, but again, if it's just farm ground and it's not within the city limits, I don't think it should be there. And so, if you'll give us a few minutes to do some research, maybe even on the GIS and figure that out, I think maybe by the time we get to the ordinance, we'll have it.
Okay, and I'll just say, I know, you know, we've got reports and it's item B of a, of a three-section agenda, but I'm gonna speak for the council, I think we're okay holding tight on that until we, because we definitely want to clarify that and I appreciate you, sir, for bringing that concern here and asking about the farmland, because that's interesting on that, so. Any other, yeah, anything else for the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those, same sign. And for all of you still in the audience, this is the time we open up our meeting like we do every meeting to citizens concerned. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to address council on an agenda item, you're more than welcome to do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll move on to reports and we'll start with council member Hawes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I have is, is at six o'clock today in the, in the Bel Air City Hall, kinda I guess there was a presentation about the Riverfront property in downtown Wichita. They're kinda going around to all the neighboring communities and this is kind of a regional draw, so just kinda getting input, kinda going over what they are thinking about. This has to do with the west or the east bank of the, of the river where Century Two is and the Performing Arts Center, so, you know, it definitely has a lot more to do with than just Wichita. You know, it was very informative, some great information. I, I would, you know, suggest everybody go to www.riverfrontlegacywichita.org and kinda look at the information themselves, it's great information, you know, and it's interesting that, that they're kinda in the same place as us as far as, you know, everybody saying that a gathering spot, a natural gathering spot is a, is a major need for, for not just small towns, but big towns, so, you know, I'd recommend everybody go check it out. It's, it's very informative, so. That is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate it. Councilmember Benage?
No report this evening, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Martine?
No report, Mayor.
Councilmember Smith?
I also have no report.
Councilmember Elsough?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a brief report. September 26th, I attended the Chisholm Creek Utility Authority Committee meeting. We did have a couple items come across our committee, I guess the main one being one of, another water well that Bel Air owns is being refurbished or having preventative, preventative maintenance performed on it, so that was a little bit of money we had to spend on that. And then also, in the last few months, we asked for additional requests for proposals for the sewage treatment plant overhaul and we did get some additional design proposals from a few firms that's currently being reviewed by the TAC and we're sort of waiting for some feedback on that, so the ball is rolling on that, although it is, it is slow and we're assessing what our, all of our options are, but that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. I have no formal report tonight, other than just wanna, again, let you guys know, I had the honor of attending Mayor Walters' funeral mass on Saturday. Beautiful Greek Orthodox Catholic church and the priest, one of the very first things he said, he kind of opened the service saying, you know, and Dale decided to run for mayor and why would you do that when automatically 50% of the people are gonna be upset with you? And I thought, okay, this'll be a great service, but it was a lovely service for that and again, I do have his memorial card up here for that. Then a couple of other things to piggyback on what council member Hawes said, it was great to welcome, part of the presentation here was Southern County manager Tom Stoltz was here, Southern County Commissioner Pete Meitzner, I'm actually, he and I had the conversation about this, what, six, seven, eight weeks ago, and also the Go Wichita CEO, Suzie Santo was here to, and they had great things to say about the growth here in Bel Air and again, it was interesting to hear, we're talking to major, you know, millions of dollars in the river corridor and they're going as far out as, you know, McPherson and other places taking this, because they do know it impacts the region and the state, but that the, that there were so many similarities between what they need with the, the natural gathering spots, along with the green spaces too and everything for that and do have a card here too, if anybody wants to take a picture, get notes for that to follow, get more information on that. And then, the CCUA meeting that councilman Elsough spoke about Thursday, I also attended and David Floyd sat in for our other member, Ken Lee, and I have, just wanna let everybody know, I've had conversations with Ken Lee since then, who like I said, is the other member, so he's brought up to date on what are we gonna do, looking at those RFPs for the sewage treatment there and the engineering plants there and Ann Steven was there as well and we're, so the TAC is gonna take the first round with it and then we're gonna have members from each city, you know, they're gonna kind of winnow it down to, was it three, I think, because there were seven that did, so we're gonna narrow it down to three and with the idea, knowing that we're gonna get into the holidays here pretty soon, but that we should have a suggestion to the CCUA by March, I think, was the timeline and again, this is something we've known about for a while and then budgeting for and planning for, so that's coming up. And then, everybody, October is going to be a very busy month. This Saturday, the curb side cleanup starts at 7:00 AM, so if you have big items that you want to have hauled off, please have those outside your curb or on your curb there the night before and Waste Connection will come around and get that. The brush site- The brush site, I think, is open for the final time this year, October twelfth, from nine to one, and that's there on Fifty-third Street in between Rock and Webb. And then, I know it doesn't feel like it, but it will tomorrow. Fall, I think, is finally here. I can't wait. We'll have great plans. Elizabeth will help us pick out all of our fall decorations, and it'll be a lot of fun. Now, that'll feel like fall, but the Fall Festival is October nineteenth at ten AM at the Rec Center. So, everybody, please have those on your calendar. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report this evening.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items, just to let the public aware of some things. As you mentioned, the curb site cleanup is this Saturday, so make sure everything's out by seven AM. The things that they will accept is general trash, furniture, bundled brush or limbs, appliances, electrical items, outdoor items, mattresses, refrigerators, freezers, air conditioners, as long as the freon has, has been removed and their tags. So those are really large items that can be accepted. And then things they won't accept are like car batteries, oil filters, fluorescent, fluorescent light bulbs, propane tanks, anything with asbestos in it, paint, hazardous liquid, those things. Of course, there is a hazardous waste site that Central County runs that people can take, take to. So again, that's Saturday. There are two candidate forums that are coming up this month. The first one is October seventh at the Rec Center, and that's hosted by the Bel Air Senior Club. And the Bel Air Area Chamber of Commerce is holding another forum on the twenty-fourth at seven PM here at City Hall. So, those are coming up. As the mayor mentioned, the Fall Festival is the nineteenth, so put that on your, your calendar, ten to two. They're gonna have petting zoo, trunk or treats for the kids, vendor fair, car show, all kinds of things that they typically have. So, that's, that's always a good time. Would like to thank our Finance Director and Chief of Police for getting a grant from the federal government for the purchase of bulletproof vests. And it's a fifty percent grant, so we, every year we budget to replace bulletproof vests. They only last a certain amount of time. Plus, you may not be aware, but the officers wear those underneath their shirts, and in the middle of the summer, they get pretty hot and sweaty and things like that. So, every few years, we replace those, and so it's always nice to get a grant to cover that cost. It was sixteen hundred dollars, and that's for 2020, so. Did get notice from Waste Connections that they are moving to sixty-five gallon recycle carts. So, it's not gonna affect what everybody has now, but any new customers or anyone that needs their recycle cart replaced will get a sixty-five instead of a ninety gallon. Now, our contract states that they have to provide up to ninety gallons, so if someone does recycle a lot and would like two of the sixty-five gallons, they can certainly ask for that, and it's no charge. So, if everybody, what you have now, you'll keep, any new customers will get the sixty-five gallon, and, and then if you have yours replaced, it'll, it'll change. So, just to let everybody aware of that, it only affects the new people coming to town, but if someone has a cart that they need replaced. And then the last thing, if anybody's interested in flu shots, pneumonia or shingle vaccine, vaccines, the, the senior center here is going to be hosting those on October eighth in the community room, and it is from two to three PM. So, all they ask is you bring an ID card, insurance card, Medicaid card, or whatever with you. So that's a nice thing that our citizens can utilize hopefully here at City Hall. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I don't have any committees or boards or commission reports. Mr. Elsaf and I spoke about the CCUA. We'll move to Public Works, and our city engineer, Ann Stevens, has some pretty exciting news to share with us.
I put a staff report in front of your stations, and Jim, I emailed one to you, so hopefully you were able to get that. KDOT has announced a pretty exciting program that has just started. They are adding a cost share program for transportation. So this would be streets, sidewalks, bike lanes, rail, like that. They are planning on an eleven million dollar program with a fifteen percent state match that they're planning on continuing. But they've also added a one-time bonus to the pot of fifty million dollars. So these, this funding pot is available for pretty much anybody to go after. It's, it's geared towards projects that are not priority under their other programs. So we currently qualify for a lot of KDOT money through WAMPO, the Wichita Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, and their federal STP funds, and I can't remember what that acronym stands for, so I apologize. So we, we qualify for quite a few under that. But some of the projects that I was thinking of specifically for this project or for this funding is the Fifty-third Street project. We did submit it to WAMPO, but it's not a very high priority project for that funding. I, I want to stick with Woodlawn, getting additional funding for Woodlawn, and then the Rock Road project is really focusing on those, on that for WAMPO funds. But Fifty-third, from Woodlawn to Oliver, the road is deteriorating. As you've heard, it was originally poor, originally put down as a cold mix asphalt, which is used for low-volume roads. That's not a low-volume road anymore. We have three subdivisions that are proposed to go in over the next couple of years. And if even one of those goes in, we're gonna really, really struggle maintaining that road, and very likely, we're gonna have to take some fairly quick, drastic efforts, like we did on the other two sections of Fifty-third Street, where we completely removed the surfacing, turned it into gravel for a period of time, and/or paved it, which we've ended up doing with both of those. So I would like to work and apply for the funding for Fifty-third Street project. The funding deadline for this current round is October eleventh, so it's coming up very quickly. There is one other sec, there's one other deadline, which will be in March, the second round of funding. KDOT has not decided their priority listing, how they're gonna judge the projects, who's gonna get funding. They don't know that matrix yet. They also don't know how much funding of the sixty-one million, the fifty and the eleven, are they're gonna put towards each funding opportunity. But if you apply for the first one and you don't get it, you will be into the second round, so you don't have to reapply, which is a good thing. One of the other projects that I was thinking of was the intercity bike path that we had talked about, that would go from Bel Air to Keachai to Park City to Valley Center. That would be another very good project. I do think that's gonna rank fairly highly with WAMPO, because it is a multi-community, interconnected path that is not streets. So they're kind of looking to spread their money out, and that's one of the things. So that's a, just a, kind of a quick overview of the program. I did include in your packet all of the projects that we have submitted with WAMPO. So if you would like me to look at any of the other projects, I do sit on the WAMPO selection board, and I have not heard anything for when that's gonna start, but I am gonna push the Rock Road and the Woodlawn funding. So, I, I'm, I'm pretty confident that we will get at least those, yes. I'm pretty confident that we'll get those, at least those funded, but I'm not sure, you know, the, how much additionally we'll be able to get. But this is a statewide program. They are looking at evenly distributing the money throughout the entire state. So, it's gonna be fairly competitive. They've already gotten quite a few submittals, so I'd kind of like to focus my time on just one or two selected projects.
Thank you for this report. Do we have questions or comments, suggestions?
Yeah. A couple things, just observations. It's Fifty-third, or someone pointed out to me and validated this, but I think it's correct. Fifty-third Street is the only street in the metropolitan area that goes completely through east to west of the metropolitan area. So I think it's a pretty important street. I don't, are you, are you considering a, a three-lane configuration for that street, for that road?
At this time, it would just be the two-lane, like we have done from Rock Road through Web Road.
Okay. I just wondered what, what you were thinking there. I, I'm, I think I'm okay with the two-lane there, but we might wanna look at turn lanes or something because of the, of the future developments that we know are coming in. But that's gonna be a little bit iffy right now, because you don't know what those are gonna look like. The other one that I thought might be something to think about is, is Forty-Fifth from Oliver to Woodlawn. That's gonna get a lot more traffic as we expand Woodlawn, and it's, it's pretty, between Edgemore and Woodlawn, it's, it's, it's in need of some repair right now. But that was just another one I thought was, would be a good one to look at.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
On this grant, is this a matching grant, where we have to contribute fifty percent, or is it just a grant of, we get a check from the state for this money, and, you know, it might cover the whole project cost? I'm just wondering, as we look at, earlier in the year, we talked about kind of reserving some of our street fund for a larger road replacement project later in the year, and I think we're about due to get back together and kind of finalize that. And I'm wondering, will, will we need to reserve that, that, those funds for a matching contribution, should we get one of these grants?
This is, that's a very good question. This is a matching program. So, if Bel Air would be awarded part of the eleven million dollars, then there's a fifteen percent non-state match, so that could be, basically it's local funds unless we get developers to help us out. With the fifty million dollars, it's a twenty-five percent state match. Now, these grants are just construction. They do not cover design costs, they do not cover land costs, any financing costs, and they do not cover construction observation. However, these plans do not have to be designed to KDOT standards. They can be designed to local standards. KDOT will review them in concept, but they will not review them for KDOT standards, which helps a lot in construction costs and design costs.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. That may be something for us to consider around, kind of some, reserving some funds to assist with, with that project, should we get selected. I think that'd be a good project. The only other thing that maybe came to mind is something that's been, you know, talked about a little bit in Bel Air, is we do have some, some streets here in Bel Air that aren't even paved yet, some of our older neighborhoods here in Bel Air. I don't, I don't know when those would ever rise to a, you know, a priority level in the city, and so, I, I don't know if those are candidates, if that might be a candidate to think about for some new program as well, so.
It was kind of my understanding that it was more for, a little bit more major roads, but I can certainly get with the program director and ask about the residential streets.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for city engineer? Ann, thank you, as always. Appreciate you being here. And now we'll move into ordinances, resolutions, and final actions. The first thing to come before us this evening is the master pedestrian and biking plan. This is another WAMPO grant. The, Bel Air, we did receive a grant from WAMPO to prepare a master biking and walking plan. This plan will be used to guide biking and pedestrian infrastructure, as well as when applying for, for grants. So we'll have that. PEC was hired to create the plan. Let's see, Mitch Kaufman is here. So, appreciate you being here from PEC to present the final draft to us for council. I know this is something we've been talking about for, for quite a while, so we're excited to hear the report.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Glad to have me here. I'd like to thank the city staff for doing a wonderful job in helping prepare this plan, getting the word out, and the hundreds of residents that did participate in the plan. And I believe it led to a great plan and something that's ready to move forward with. We had our council workshop a couple weeks ago, and since then, presented it to the Planning Commission, had a little discussion, no changes. So, no changes have been made since you saw this. So I think, in an effort to keep this rather short, I would like to, to point you to the priority projects. So this is a lot of background information in the front, that ultimately leads to, the future network is, is shown on the slide, and then the, the priority projects, there's twelve of them. They're listed on page eight and illustrated on page ten. And we've provided preliminary planning level, construction cost estimates to go along with those. One thing to keep in mind, and I think I mentioned this earlier, was that the, the near-term projects are not in a priority order. It's more like a menu to choose from as you go through your capital improvement program development. And it's not all about construction projects. There's also priority actions that the city can take to move forward with improving biking and walking in Bel Air, such as partnering with USD and working with them, as well as requiring developers to, to put in sidewalks and bike paths as, as your subdivisions come online. So since no changes have, have happened since our workshop, I stand for any questions since then.
Anybody have any questions for our guests this evening? Well, this is our final draft, and we asked a lot of questions earlier, so I appreciate being here and looking forward to, to seeing this come to fruition, so. All right. Another question as well? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the city of Bel Air master biking and walking plan as presented and authorized. The mayor decide?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Are there any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay, for item B, I'm looking, and I don't see Ted in the room. Is he down printing and making changes? Is, let me ask, is this something we need to possibly table? Legally, can we table it for two weeks? Or if we talk about item C, do you guys just need a couple more minutes?
You could table it. It will throw off the timing of the, the process leading to the issuance of the bonds a little bit. We have concluded that that tract should not be included. Not sure why it was in the original petition, and recalculated some of the numbers. And that, you're probably types, the Fifty-third Street, main, and then there's some paving. Huge area being assessed. The good news is, if it's excluded, it's still, those assessments get spread across one hundred and twenty-four properties. So the, the net effect to the properties that remain in the district's not a huge one. And that's what Ted is, is printing right now. We recalculated that. He was going to bring those up, so you could at least see, this is what's changed in the ordinance. And that's what, it took their assessment, which was proposed to be fifteen thousand, I think, and eight, eight thousand on sewer and water, and that's now zero, and that gets spread across the remaining one hundred and twenty-four properties. So, if you could delay consideration for a few minutes, I think we would have, have the information you would want, and, and you could compare individual lots and say, you know, this lot that was going to be assessed for a hundred and fifty dollars is now gonna be assessed for a hundred and sixty dollars, and at least know what the changes are and the changes would be present when you consider the ordinance.
Well, I'm gonna look to our city attorney. How do we formally officially flip-flop item B and C this, at this point, this meeting?
That's a good question, Mr. Mayor. I, again, because you're under Bob's rules, I would say, hmm.
Should we just take a break? Okay, hold on, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I, I had a couple of questions. I don't know if we wanna, if other folks have questions, our questions may consume enough time for this, too. But I, I was a little curious, as I looked through this, if you could talk a little bit about how, when I looked through it, it looked like all of the special assessments were spread equally, potentially based on the number of lots? Is that the standard practice? I, I guess I was expecting that maybe it's... I, I guess I was expecting that maybe special assessments were based on square footage of the property or something other than just number of lots. Can you talk about how you come up with how you're gonna spread out these special assessments?
Yes. Good question. The only requirement is that they be spread in an equitable manner and that similarly situated property is treated in the same manner. The statute gives some examples of how specials can be spread equally per lot, which is, here in Bel Air, it's called fractional. But if you have 25 lots, it's 1/25th per lot, so it's equally per lot frequently. Square footage also permitted based on relative value without regard to improvements. So, if you have a property that's worth $100,000 of assessed valuation and one that's worth $10,000 of assessed valuation, if you don't consider anything that's built on them, that's another method that can be used. In Bel Air, for a long time, the fractional basis or equally per lot has been used in most cases. And that sort of makes sense if you're thinking about a subdivision where every lot is pretty similarly situated, so you want, want those to have equal assessment to the same degree. There were a couple that were, in, in this grouping, that were assessed on a square footage basis. And the 53rd Street Water Main and, and improvements are, are one of those. And part of that rationale, I think, and this is, is developer and developers consultants-driven most of the time. They're the ones that prepare the petitions and then we have the city review them and make sure that they make sense. But I think in this instance where the square footage was used, it's just such a large area. And at the time, there were just a handful of lots that were platted. And so, to try to come up with any sort of fractional basis that was equally per lot, well, there just weren't that many lots. There were larger tracts that, that again, benefit from it. That's similar.
Just dropped.
Okay. So, I don't know if that answers your question. That's one of the reasons, there's nothing that, that drives it other than what makes sense and is it fair in a particular situation. So, again, in, in the case of these improvements that are being assessed on a square footage basis, and it's pursuant to Resolution 16-32 and 16-33, you have some platted lots, you have some large, you know, quarter sections, and so, square footage works pretty well there where you, if you use square footage and you have platted lots, they're gonna be close to being equal, but not exactly the same. You, you know, you deal with a curve on a cul-de-sac and somebody's gonna have a few more square feet in their lot and somebody's gonna have, have a few less square feet. And so, so I think that's reflected. If you look at all the lots that were assessed on a square footage basis, they're all in kind of the $400, $500 range in assessments. And if we'd done some sort of equally per lot, then they would've been exactly the same. But again, the only thing, and, and all the things we've mentioned are not the only ways you can assess it. There's some other method that staff and then governing body consider and decide, this is the equitable way to do this. Sometimes you see it on, on multifamily or, or maybe not multifamily, on lots that you know are going to get built and used in different ways, single family, maybe multifamily, that sometimes a, an assessment unit is used rather than kind of an equally per lot of whatever the rationale may be. And that's something that's not mentioned by statute at all. It's just sort of knowing what's there and, and deciding, well, equally per lot's not really equitable in this case, or maybe equally square, per square foot's not equitable. But we think if we define some sort of other assessment unit, that's equitable. And so, again, it's fairly wide open, but almost universally, particularly if you're dealing with platted properties here in the city of Bel Air. For a number of years, it's just been what I call equally per lot, or, but it's also called a fractional basis where you total up the lots.
So, that's consistent with what we typically do here in Bel Air. Is that consistent with what is typically done in the surrounding area as well?
Yes.
Okay. The other question that I had is when I look at the exhibit, Exhibit A1 on the second page, and you get down into the second section, there's Block A, Lot 1, Block A, Lot 2, Block A, Lot 3. The, there's a sidewalk resolution and it, it looks like the special assessment for that is only on one lot. Do you, I, I didn't quite understand that. There's not a map that accompanies this?
I'll have to grab.
And so...
The rest of my map.
The way that I'm reading it, it looks like there's $4,000 of sidewalk assessments on, on just one lot where the rest of them don't have the sidewalk.
It's, that's not the case. You just have to flip forward a couple of pages. That, that particular development has so many lots. And again, factually, I don't recall why, and you're right, you probably have to look at a map as to why Block A, Lot 1 is benefiting from the sidewalk. And then, you have to go all the way down to Block, or Lot 1, Block B, until you find the next property that benefits. I know the sidewalks are typically done sort of on a skeletal one-side basis and, and again, I'm sort of like you, without having the map in front of me or knowing what, what drove that originally in the petition, but it's, it's not very many. If you look...
Right, there's not a lot of them that have that sidewalk line item, which makes me think that maybe the way that the sidewalk special assessments being spread is based on whose property is adjacent to it, not based on the whole neighborhood, which was my understanding of how we typically did the special assessments was for the neighborhood. The cost of the sidewalk was spread over the entire neighborhood. And so, I want to make sure we're being consistent there.
Yeah, that I can't answer. And, and some of this, you know, these petitions were from a number of years ago, and I don't know if the city established a policy about sidewalks and who gets assessed originally for sidewalks or who, who doesn't in sort of intervening years. But if, if I understand your question, it's, well, should the entire neighborhood have been assessed something even if they live across the street from it, then, I don't...
I would just say it would be my preference if that would be, had the special assessments would be spread.
Special assessments are so simple. We break it down with all these, over all of the, with the pavement, sewer, the sidewalk, and yeah, I get what you're saying.
Yeah, and I, and if you look at, at those lots that get a sidewalk special assessment, they are all being assessed exactly the same. So, for all of the paving, sewer, sidewalk, drainage, and, and water, so that's, I mean, that's a good thing. At least there's a rationale for treating a, a set of properties in, in one way. But I, I don't specifically recall the project and, and I don't know if Ted or the engineers...
Which one are you talking about?
Deer Run sidewalks, where some of the lots are being assessed for sidewalks and some are not. I will add procedurally, if, if the thought was, well, maybe we have some lots that we'd like to assess for the sidewalks that aren't being assessed, that right now, we only have the authority to assess those lots because the owner of the property submitted a petition that says, we want sidewalks to be constructed and we agree that these lots will be assessed and, and other lots would not be. So, right now, we have the documents in place, the petition and the resolution that say these are the properties that are going to be assessed for these things. And if we, if we go in a different, different direction, that would be a change and we wouldn't be able to take care of this tonight and, and would have to have some sort of an amended, because we'll, it's, it's a due process thing that we assess people that weren't listed in resolutions originally.
Typically, the resolutions that we pass when the developers petition us, I, I recall them specifying the addition that they're petitioning for and which phase of the addition they're petitioning for. Do they specify individual lots in the petition? They list out every single lot?
Yeah. And this, this one is Deer Run addition sidewalks, Resolution 16-23.
And so, you're saying that if that original petition for Deer Run didn't list all of the lots for the sidewalks, then we don't have the authority to change how that would work?
Right.
So, that's something that we, the council that approved that would've had to review at that time?
Yes, exactly. Sorry, you said it better than I did, but yeah.
There's a lot of, a few people being a little extra surprised.
Right.
Yeah.
So, is, is that a confirm, confirmation that that resolution did specifically say that those sidewalks were to be assessed and not, not others in that addition? Are you confirming that?
Right. That that resolution would have listed four sidewalks, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 12 lots to be assessed.
And so, it's really the developer who's determining who's getting paid for the sidewalk in those cases?
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Normally, in these type of situations in the past, it's always the side of the street that has the sidewalk that gets assessed. They haven't changed that as far as I know.
And it, it is clearly, again, it'd be useful to have a map and, and this project was petitioned more than three years ago, but that, that's a very limited sidewalk. And it could be that it was sort of the first phase of sidewalk, maybe for model homes, and there'd be a later phase that'll send the sidewalk deeper into the development. That I don't know, but it's, I mean, there are probably, I'm just ballparking this, 70, 80 lots maybe being assessed as part of Deer Run addition, and only 12 are getting sidewalk. Again, it'd be nice to have a map or have the developer here to, but I, that is probably as good a guess, maybe as good a thought as anyone. It's, it's maybe just for the initial phase with model homes, so there's a place to walk.
And I'm, I'm gonna guesstimate too, based on, I think what Kevin's saying is correct. So, if you drive in Deer Run, it's right off of Rock, of Rock Road. And you have to drive a ways before you actually hit where the houses are. So, the sidewalk's gonna start at Rock Road, go along where Arnell's live and back, and then it'll start heading to the north and the east, and then it'll end up into Rock Spring. And so, that's, that's why I was thinking, well, why would $4,000, that seems a lot per sidewalk? Well, that's because, again, like Kevin's saying, if the developer brought in a petition and the first phase was that those model homes that are backed up against the lake, they had to pull that sidewalk all the way in off of Rock, go past Arnell's property, which is probably 500 feet or so before they start hitting houses. And so, that's why that could be expend, that cost, so that they're covering a lot, not just in front of their house. So, I think that Kevin's probably right is why that one is high and probably why the developer decided to spread it to those lots. And then, I'm also, because I was comparing to Rock Spring second addition, you see the sidewalks there are $1,000. And so, those are, you know, smaller lots that don't have that cover in. But what's also interesting, because we've talked about it tonight, you'll see that they've got paving, water, sidewalk, and sewer all the way down to Block 4, Lot 13, and then Block 1, Lot 1, there's only sewer. So, that's a case where in this particular piece, there was another 20 lots that only had sewer attached to them. And so, we already had that issue come up tonight where someone had bought a house and there's only partials spread at that time. And then, they'll come back later when the street's in the water and the sidewalk's going in and have that assessed too, so. And there's a lot of projects in here with a lot of different things happening, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is, this is, from my experience doing mortgages, this is something, something typical anyway, that assessments come at different times, right? I mean, if you can, you can go on the county website and look at what specials are left and you'll have this dropping off in, you know, 10 years, and this one 11, 12, 13, you know. This is, this is very typical to have it, it's starting to be assessed in different, because it's built at different times, so.
The sidewalks are, are unique, but it's not unusual at all to think, well, we've gotta have a water main to serve all phases of this development. And so, we're gonna assess that now in connection with the first phase. So, you'll have first phase lots that get water main, but you also have all the other phases that get the water main, which are my example, and nothing else at that time. But those first phase also get their interior paving, service lines, and so, yeah, it's just confirmation of what you're saying. When you phase things, there're gonna be some overlap and the way they get engineered and designed, it makes sense to do, drainage, great example. Usually drainage for the entire area gets, or frequently gets taken care of all at once. So, you may have the, the entire addition being assessed early on for the drainage, but maybe not for their street sewer, water, and individual improvements until several years later when you get to Phase 4 or something.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One more question. How, how far in advance were the notices mailed out to homeowners that are affected by these special assessments? I'm curious, I, I just want to make sure that everyone has had an adequate time. May, may, heaven forbid, hopefully, there's not another lot, you know, buried in this list somewhere that maybe shouldn't be being special assessed. I want to make sure they've had adequate time to bring it to our attention.
Yeah. So, by statute, there's published notice and mailed notice, each of which has to occur at least 10 days in advance of the hearing. In this case, it was closer to, publication was two weeks ago this coming Thursday. So, that would've been like 12 days. And then, the mailing was on also Thursday or Friday. So, 11 days, 12 days.
But everyone received a mailing about this, not just the publication? Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
Which is...
Yeah, that stays attached, since we're just making sure.
This year was a, was a Herculean effort by Ted and his staff because there are 21 project lots.
I've, I've filled in about 30 calls over the last two weeks. So, I, I'm, a lot of people have contacted me, explained the process, and seeing there's not too many people here, it makes me a little happy that we got through to a lot of them. Yeah, Kevin, Kevin did a lot of work on this one because there's a little, some of the, the only really issue is when they get broken down into tracks, the lot and blocks are very easy. You can't really screw lot and block number up. The, the tracks make things a little more difficult, don't they, Kevin?
Yes.
The tracks and different, different areas that doesn't have, that's not plotted.
And on, on the assessment rule that you're seeing now, which is the one we referenced earlier, where a property's being removed and it's for the 53rd Street paving and water, I mentioned this earlier, there were a couple of tracks that at the time, the petitions were submitted, were unplatted, and now they've been platted. So, then you have to match the platted lots to the legal, the meets and bounds legal description that was included originally. I think we did that. And again, in, in terms of what, what I would call Track 6, which is this gentleman's property, not sure why it, it was included originally, certainly will benefit from these improvements.
And which one is that again? I'm sorry?
It's, if you have what is being in that map, you go to the fourth page.
Okay, there. I just want to make sure because when we make the motion, that we have that taken out. Okay. Which, so that leads to my question then. Mrs. City Attorney, you know, for us to come up with, with the motion, we have all these different ones. Do we need to say anything differently in the motion than what is written for this to take place with this one being deleted to make sure that this gentleman is not special assessed as he should have been?
You don't need to, but you can reference, is this a...
Did you get...
I just want to make sure, City Attorney... I just wanna make sure our city attorney and our bond and council is satisfied with our motion.
Maybe you have to specify that one has revised with respect to the public resolution 16-32, 33, or something. So it's specifically...
Do you want that just?
Did we know what, what reservation?
Yeah, it's... Yeah.
So we can just say as revised, and that'll clarify, since this has been entered into official record now?
I would reference Exhibit A as revised, and then...
Exhibit A as revised, okay.
A, A1 as revised with reference to paving Resolution 16, R-1632. Can you see the note, the column, second column, which you were handed? You mentioned that specifically, reference and not reference.
For most clear?
Couple of things I would add, if, if I could. This is the purpose of the hearing, so we can work through these things. And I, you know, that petition was signed and submitted three and a half years ago, and, and that property should not have, have been included. And so that's the good news. That's why we have these hearings. Sometimes, you know, there are no changes to be made, everything is just fine. The second thing, if you...
Say, this is, this is rarity in mind, yeah.
Right. The second thing, and this may be useful just as an example. If you look at, at the pages or the revised portion of the assessment rule as it relates to the paving and the water projects under Resolution 16-32 and 16-33, Block 1 Lot 1, Rock Spring, previously, before the revision, was assessed $456 for paving and $189 for water. And that's changing to $472 and $196. So as I mentioned before, it's a change, but it's not a huge change, because this is being assessed against such a large, large area. One final thing I will add. A number of these properties, particularly as you go east of Rock Road, get assessed a benefit fee. And we, we haven't talked about that, but a number of years ago, the city constructed water and sewer mains to sort of open up that area for development. And it was in connection with an initial development and, I don't know if you're, maybe it was first phase of Rock Spring or something. But the city designed it so that it was going to serve a, a large area and contemplated that whenever additional properties are platted and developed and connect and benefit from that sewer main and water main, they will pay a benefit fee, which is a statutory term that references this very thing. If you make a sewer main or water main improvement, somebody's not assessed or some property's not assessed because it hasn't developed yet or it doesn't benefit yet, but in the future it may develop, then you can impose a benefit fee. So we do that now on a lot of, of the Rock Spring additions and those things heading east, because they all are benefiting from that sewer main and water main. And I think it's gonna be similar on, on the 53rd Street, as I'm calling it, the paving and the water assessments that we just revised, when areas including this gentleman's property, if he ever approaches the city and says, I want to plat and develop that property, it undoubtedly benefits from these improvements, just like the property next door, which is being assessed, which is within the city limits. And so something to keep in mind. If, if that property develops and is part of the city in the future, it will pay a benefit fee if the governing body at that time chooses to impose a benefit fee on them. Because at that point, they'll be similarly situated to all the other properties here, benefiting from the water and the paving, and you're within the city limits, and you're platted and you're developing. And so something to keep in mind, I thought it would be worth mentioning.
So question on this property that we just determined that should not be assessed, and it is gonna raise the prices for other properties. I think these are all Rock Spring. Am I correct about that?
Yes. Yeah, Rock Spring Addition and Rock Spring Second. And then there are still some large unplatted tracks that, that are also being assessed, that when they get platted will be, be assessed individually.
So those citizens have been advised of a certain price that they're going to be assessed, and now we're changing those numbers. Are we, are we in a position that we would be telling them, hey, because of calculation issues or, or miscommunication or whatever the issue is here, have had to change the numbers for them so that they don't get a surprise here when they see the new numbers?
Yeah, good question. By law, this change isn't significant enough to, to trigger any requirement. If it was more than 10%, I would tell you, yeah, you, you need to give them some notice other than, than final notice. I mean, that's what will happen next. If you pass the ordinance, it approves the final assessment rule, and then property owners get notice of that final assessment, and they have the opportunity to prepay it in whole or in part. So legally, no, because it's, it's such a minor change and, and we're still complying with the original petition and resolution. But as I said earlier, I think if it was a significant change, more than 10%, then, then we should give them additional notice and, and an opportunity to be heard. That's, that's what the result would be, an opportunity to be heard. You saw one number, had an opportunity to come to a hearing, you're gonna see a different number. If it was significantly different, then you have another opportunity to be heard. If it's this small, it's not legally required. Doesn't mean you, you couldn't do something different if you so chose.
So what was said in the original notice to, to the residents in these areas, the citizens in these areas, were they told, hey, the, the amount is estimated to be here, or were they told the amount is? Were they given a fixed number or an estimate? Or, or what was said to them?
The, the mailing is there, and it's quote, proposed, proposed assessment, so.
Proposed assessment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not estimated, but sort of similar language.
So it doesn't say in Rock and Stone, yeah.
Yeah. This is what we're proposing to assess. We're gonna have a hearing. We're gonna work through any final changes, and then a final assessment will be determined.
And you did, you think the letter said there would be a final assessment after the hearing?
Yeah, it does say that. But once the ordinance is adopted, they'll get notice. And it actually advises them early that once they get their final notice, they're gonna have an opportunity to prepay and, and the period of time they would have to prepay. And then they'll get, again...
I just didn't want the, to be some expectation that we, they, they had a certain number and we didn't correctly state what that, what that number really represented. But it sounds like you did, so.
No, and, and a really good question.
It sounded like we did that, so that's good.
Yeah. Good question, and I, a thought I actually had when we were making changes, sort of, well, how much is this gonna change the assessments? And again, it's, it's not much, probably two or three percent maybe. And I was kinda relieved that it wasn't a significant change, because that would trigger some different considerations, just as you said. Should we give these property owners additional notice of what the proposed assessment is?
Thank you.
Well, Kevin, I appreciate you being here. This makes up for all the times that you've come here, and we haven't had questions for you, so.
I may like those times. I'm just kidding. Again, this is, this is the purpose of the hearing, and I'm frankly not surprised when you have 21 projects to assess. And, you know, just on, on the 53rd Street project we're talking about, it's 125 parcels, and that includes the large tracks that haven't been platted yet. I mean, someday it's probably gonna be 200, 300 lots that are being assessed for this. So there's a lot of property, a lot of property owners involved, and, and so, not surprised.
Big and complex, and we, we had the one, and the public hearing worked, so the process worked, and we've rectified it. So I wanna thank you and thank our staff, and thank the gentleman, who's not here anymore, but for bringing this to our attention, and glad we could get it fixed. And it sounds like, from what our city attorney says, we can go ahead and take action tonight that does fix this. That would be my recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a comment and potentially a question. First of all, I just wanted to say to Mr. Woolley, to thank him for coming up and telling us about this. So he did identify a mistake, and that, as our council said, that's the purpose of this hearing. So it's nice to see that our process here is allowing mistakes to be corrected. So I commend Mr. Woolley for bringing this to our attention, and I commend the city for having the people here in place to be able to administer that correction in a swift manner. Thank you for answering all those questions and helping us sort this out. I just wanted, I thought it was worth just mentioning that someone might say, well, how could this, how could this have happened? Well, in looking at the map of this location, Mr. Woolley's property is quite literally surrounded by Bel Air. It's, his land is an island in the middle of Bel Air, and his jurisdiction is Sedgwick County. So if you just kinda looked at the area, you probably would assume maybe that was in Bel Air, 'cause it's completely surrounded by Bel Air. So it's not like this was on the edge of the city or something, on the outskirts. He's quite literally surrounded by Bel Air, so. I guess I can kinda see him looking at that, that kind of mistake could, could have easily happened. So I was just running a quick review of the numbers, and it did look like, as you said, the, the changes to the rest of the properties is less than 10%. So on the advisement of council, I'm certainly okay with moving ahead with this, with the amended resolution or ordinance.
Is that a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I motion to approve. With, uh, do I state, do I state the ordinance first and then add the amendment at the end? Okay. I motion to approve an ordinance levying special assessments on certain property to pay the cost of internal improvements in the city of Bel Air, Kansas, as heretofore authorized by resolution numbers R-16-10, R-16-11, R-16-12, R-16-18, R-16-19, R-16-20, R-16-21, R-16-22, R-16-23, R-16-24, R-16-25, R-16-26, R-17-04, R-16-28, R-16-29, R-16-32, R-16-33, R-17-07, R-17-08, R-17-09, and R-16-37. And with, and providing for the collection of such special assessments, and authorize the mayor to sign pending the amendment to Exhibit A1, amending R-16-32 and R-16-33.
Second.
Has been first and second. Before I call for the vote, I just want clarification from our city attorney that we're just fine with this to take this one out, okay? Since it is an ordinance, it does call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Benage?
Aye.
Councilmember Elsoff?
Aye.
Councilmember Haas?
Aye.
Councilmember Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, we're on to Item C here. For water main updates. The 2019 water fund budget contains money to repair and replace existing water mains. There is an area of Aurora Park that staff has identified for upsizing. Current pipe size is four inches, and staff believes it should be eight, as well as having several repairs on this pipe in the past. Our city engineer is here to explain. I know it seems like we talk a lot about water pipes, especially in the older park there, and, and certainly in Aurora Park. If they're four inches, it'd need to be eight, and we have the money budgeted. I'm looking forward to this report and us taking action on that.
First of all, I would like to thank council for providing us with the funds this year to be able to make some improvements. It's been a long time coming, and I know the residents are, have spoke with myself personally, as well as our staff, about the aging infrastructure, as well as the pressure in this area of Aurora Park. Now, while I mention the pressure, it is within KDHNE guidelines. But even the lowest portion of the guidelines, sometimes you wish that you had a little bit more. So what this project is going to do is going to replace the water main along Parkwood, or along 39th Street, from the connection, which is just north of 38th and Parkwood, come around the corner and to match in at 39th and Harding. And when we were originally scoping this project, we thought it was gonna come in quite a bit higher than what it did. We were estimating closer to the amount where Dewing and Meese were, over the 200,000 range. So since it came in significantly low, under budget, we still have a fair amount left in the fund for replacement. So we did ask McCullough, the low bid, to give us a quote for extending the replacement up through a portion of Parkwood, which would take it to the next intersection. I have that quote, and we'll be providing it to you at your next council meeting. I will tell you it's about $70,000. So that will, is still within budget, and will get us further on down the road on replacement. Staff did work with all four contractors, and it was, the contractors really, the ones that came up and said, you know, directional drilling, this water main is gonna be a much better, lower cost alternative, instead of where they just would open up, open cut and dig a trench through everybody's front yards. So this is going to be predominantly directionally drilled. So it's, the, the water main pipe is just gonna be drilled through the ground. You're not gonna see open cuts or open trenches, except where we have fire hydrants or bends or connections or service lines that are gonna be reconnected. All of the service lines are going to be replaced from the water meter to the water main. They will have new water meters, they will have new water meter boxes. So there will be some improvements there. We will not be touching the residence line from the water meter to the house, other than to make that connection. So it will be a fairly significant improvement. The residences should see, once this is done, a fairly good bump in pressure. So we're really excited about this opportunity, looking forward to bringing you that change order at your next meeting. I'm here for questions.
I guess my first question is, so with the directional drilling, I, I really, I'm excited to, to hear that can be done now. What will residents there, what will the interruption be to their water service?
We, we've designed the improvements to keep it away from the existing line. So really, the only interruptions in service that residents should see is when we make the connections to the individual homes and when we make the connection to the overall water main on each end. And those interruptions would, should be less than a day. And I, I'm not gonna give, I, I would hope they would be a couple hours, but I'm not going to. I, I, I know it's on record now, but, you know, less than a day.
There's one makes cognizant of that, 'cause yeah, we certainly don't want residents to actually go a long time without water in their home for that. And then, of course, we do, we'll give proper notice and obtain that notice. What is the timeline? When is this expected to be done?
That is one thing that I forgot to ask.
Okay.
But I would imagine that it's going to get started within the next month.
Nice Christmas present.
Yes. It, it will be done this year. I can guarantee that.
And I'm, I also wanna commend you too on finding a contractor that came in so, a reputable one, who does good work with this drilling and coming so much under budget that we're gonna be able to do additional that we could not even thought that we could do this year. So I wanna commend you for that.
Yeah, we were planning on doing that next year.
Right, right. We're already a year ahead on that, so. We're already a year ahead on that, so, I'm sure the Aurora Park residents will appreciate that, so. Do we have any other questions for our city manager or anything?
I have a couple of questions. One is, and I think I know the answer to this, but just, just to make sure we're on the same page, which direction is the water flowing? Is it flowing from the six inch into the eight inch, or from the eight inch into the six inch?
It actually flows both ways. There's not really a direction of water. It depends on where the demand is. The entire system is pressurized at all times, so when there is a demand from one location, it will flow both ways to meet that demand. So I can't really give you a strict answer on that.
Yeah, okay, that's fun, that's fine. I could tell from the diagram what that was, but that's good, thank you. The other is, in our notices to the residents, do we tell them, hey, there is a possibility with additional pressure, they could have some internal fixture issues, that their fixtures haven't been used to this additional pressure?
We can certainly add that to the notice, that, and I will work with the city attorney on the specific wording of that.
Okay, thank you. I think that would be important, because what you don't want to have happen is something funny, fixture break, you say it's all wrong. Okay, thank you.
Yep, we will stay within the KDHNE guidelines for pressures, so nowhere in town are we towards the high end of the pressures. But yes, fixtures that we're not appropriate, or, you know, we're not used to receiving those pressures, you may see differences.
Any other questions for our city attorney?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to accept the quote from McCullough Excavation at a price of $141,330 for upsizing water mains in certain areas of Aurora Park and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. First and second, any other questions or comments before I call for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, well, that's our three agenda items, agenda for the evening. Discussion of future issues, as I mentioned beginning the meeting, wondering, does the very next day, Wednesday, the ninth, does that work for everybody?
That does not, yeah. I'm in Pittsburgh, Kansas that day, and the turn is that certain, it's about a three hour drive.
Okay. What about Thursday, the 10th?
It would work better.
Thursday, the 10th?
I will mention that is the Planning Commission meeting, but we can have them meet in the community room.
All right. Well then, let's move it to the 10th, if you guys are okay with that.
Okay.
We'll do that. I have no need for an executive session. Is anybody else?
Wait a minute. On the council workshop, can I add something?
Huh.
Mm-hmm.
How about December?
That's what I'm adding. Holidays and Christmas and New Year's, be my last year to tell you guys.
Okay, we can certainly do that.
Well, that way they can, the employees can plan ahead of time, and call grandma and grandpa and say, we're coming home.
We can add that to the agenda. Other agenda items, Ty, that you want to share?
Yeah, so we've got three that, so far. We are working on the franchise agreements for AT&amp;T and West Star. Usually those are 20-year agreements, and both of those have expired, so Jackie and I are working with each company. There's also, in that, there's franchise fees, which the city has paid for from those companies, and so there's talk discussion in that as well. So we'll have those two ready to discuss, and then for the last year, basically, staff's been working on making some updates to our entire personnel policy, so we'd like to have you review that as well. So those are the three things that staff would like to talk to the council about.
That's a pretty big item, Ty. We've got to have a lot of time to talk.
Mr. Mayor, West Star, of course, will be every G.
Yes, that's correct.
Did we need to have an item on the agenda to talk about the remaining street fund budget? I know we've said September, October was when we needed to do that, and we're at that time of year. I know there's the grant thing in place, so curious how we should proceed with planning for those projects at this point?
Yeah, that was another, after the discussion tonight, that was another thought that I had, is maybe we need to have Ann talk a little bit about what we've done so far on street projects, and if there's anything else that we need to schedule.
Anything else? As I said earlier, I have no need for an executive session, is a member of staff or council?
Mr. Mayor, I motion to adjourn.
Second.
First and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned at 8:35.